It is, I'm gonna call the February 7th meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us. We're happy that you're here on such a cold and spitty evening. It's not easy to haul yourself out of your house in front of your fire, or even to be on a Zoom. The Zoom makes it really possible for more people to participate without leaving their homes, which we really appreciate. The first item on the agenda is a public comment, but before we do that, I just want to make a couple of brief comments. So the first is, Sabina had already said, if you are, please sign in. And if you are in the Zoom, if you would please use the chat feature to sign in. So that we can record that you participated in the meeting. That's helpful. If, when we have time for a public comment, we ask that you raise your hand and I, as the chair, will recognize you. If you're on the Zoom, the raise hand feature is in the lower right-hand side of your screen. You press on the reactions button, and that's where you can find the raise hand function. We are embarking on a work session this evening to begin diving into some more of the details of the town plan. And as we do that, I was thinking a lot about this recently and about our community and working together with our neighbors. And thought about intentions and recognizing the intentions that I have coming forward that I wanted to just lay out so that we see where we're operating from. The first one is to, I really think it's important to recognize that everyone who's here is here because they care, and that's really important, whether we agree or disagree. We know that everybody cares. It's also important to know that everyone who cares is not here, can't be here, busy, working, kids, just not, not in the schedule for whatever reason. And it's our job to really continue to do a lot more outreach. And as we're going through our discussions, to ask ourselves if we are really thinking about people who we know care, but can't be here. The third is that we want to listen to one another with an open mind and listen for areas of consensus. And everything won't be areas of consensus. And also, I think it's important that we give space to dissenting opinions and to new ideas. And lastly, I'd like to really ask us all to focus on the journey forward. The past is important. We can learn a lot from the past. And the history is well-known to many of us, but the Planning Commission has basically forty-eight hours a year to do all the work that we need to do. And we have a lot of work to do, and we have ambitious plans in front of us. And we really ask that everyone focus on the journey forward, which is how we basically have framed the town plan project. So we'll tonight go over the agenda. We'll have first a time for public comment, where we invite people to share a comment on anything that's on your mind. We ask you to be brief and focused and keep your comment to under three minutes. Then David White, our consultant, is here, and he'll be leading a discussion about a specific topic within the town plan, planning project around land use. And as part of that discussion, we'll look at the question of the month that the Planning Commission distributed on Front Porch Forum. And then the Planning Commission will continue with our regular administrative meeting. And during David's time, we will also have an additional time for a public comment. And we ask that during that time that you focus your comments specifically on the topic at hand, which is the land use considerations as it relates to the town plan. And then lastly, I just want to remind everybody that we are fortunate to have a professional, a planning professional on staff at Town Hall, Linda Blash. And she is available to receive your phone calls, your emails, or your visits here in Town Hall. So if for some reason tonight you feel rushed, or there's not enough time, or you forgot to say something that you wanted to say, or you think of something after the fact, we invite you to please contact Linda at any time. This is a several-month project. This isn't the only opportunity for weighing in. So with that, then I'll open the floor to a public comment. If anybody has public comment, I think first I'll ask for people in the room, and then I'll ask for people on a Zoom. So does anybody in the room have anything to share from a public comment? And if you wouldn't mind using the microphone and stating your name first. Okay, hearing none. Does anybody online in the Zoom, if you have a public comment, if you would use the raise hand feature? And if we don't see you after a minute or two, it's totally okay to unmute yourself and yell at us. That's fine. As long as it's not interrupting somebody else. Okay, hearing none. Then we'll go on to the next item, which is number three, which is for the Planning Commission to approve our minutes of January seventeenth. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Eric, thank you. Were there any corrections or clarifications to the minutes? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Chris? Sarah, are you on the phone, on the Zoom? Okay, we want to make sure that we have Sarah to, to vote. All is in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so the minutes are approved. Then the next item is discussing the Town Plan 2024, which we have framed as Jericho's Journey Forward. I'm a big set-the-stage person, so I apologize if everybody knows everything. But since we have a lot of people participating, I think it's really important for everyone to feel like they're starting at the same place and they're on the same page. So David White was here at our meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we held a kickoff meeting. And during that time, David explained to us how he planned to lead us in this work. The work will take throughout most of 2023. He laid out the project plan. He talked about the highlights of the current town plan, some of the challenges with the current town plan. And I invite the people who are participating, anybody, to visit the Join in Jericho website. We spent a lot of time creating a Town Plan 2024 page, which has video, PowerPoint presentations, links to resources and materials. And that will help you really understand how the Planning Commission is approaching the project. So welcome, David. Thank you for joining us. I'll turn the floor to you to talk about land use.
Land use. Awesome. So I'm gonna share a screen. I have a presentation to kind of focus our conversation. It is apparently working on. I can actually. So just to offer a little bit of context, that as you move into this next phase of, of the project, it includes four work sessions with the Planning Commission around some of the principal topics that are most important to building the town plan and beginning with land use. The other topics are housing, the local economy, and infrastructure. Infrastructure, as I see it, is really a bucket with a lot of different parts in it, which would include things like transportation and community facilities and, and water and sewer and those types of things. All of those, those essential elements that go into, into supporting and facilitating the, the more visible and, and, and I think important aspects of the, of the town plan. And that particularly begins with land use. Having trouble with the network. Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna start to share again.
Hello, Sabina.
Okay. Maybe we should turn. So we've already discussed this part. This is the, the first of four Planning Commission work sessions. In the middle of this schedule, on May 3rd, is a community forum that we are looking to host at MNU, and that will really cover a wide range of all of these topics in a way that will bring people together to have a more interactive conversation around what have we all put together. I begin with land use because land use is really the heart and soul of the town plan. It, it is really where the rubber meets the road and all the things that everybody's concerned about, whether it's, whether it's housing, or economy, or transportation, or natural resources. It all comes together in, in the land use plan. And that land use plan is built upon the natural environment that we found ourselves in. So tonight's conversation will really focus initially on that, the natural environment that makes Jericho what it is, and then the land use plan that, that lays upon landscape. And then we'll talk about the, then the, the essential elements that go into actually creating town and creating community. Excuse me. The first few slides here are really just a reorganization of, of what is in the current town plan. These are, the first four goals in the town plan are specific to the, the land use and land use pattern of the town, and it's about protecting the natural environment, the rural character, the historic character of the town, and concentrating new development in the three village centers and the commercial district. That's, those are the kind of the two moving parts that we're really talking about here tonight. Protecting the landscape and the natural environment and concentrating development in certain centers around the city. I'm sorry, around the town. And that is then very consistent with the state land use goals, which is kind of hidden on the bottom of the page here. To maintain the historic settlement pattern of compact village and urban centers separated by rural countryside. That's language that's taken right out of statute, and that's really kind of the guiding light to follow in developing land use plans all across the state. In the current plan, as, as you know, the plan is currently divided into nearly a dozen individual chapters on a wide range of topics. This, these happen to be the goals that are contained in the land use section of the plan. And once again, you see reinforcing and enhancing Jericho's settlement pattern of compact villages and interspersed with rural countryside, preserving the rural character, and then considering the regional context, which is kind of how we relate to our adjacent municipalities and then the region as a whole. What's our, what's our place? What's our, what are influences? How do we influence what happens in, in other parts of the, of the region? The natural resource section also has three goals here, protecting, preserving Jericho's natural resources, maintaining existing information and building upon existing information about Jericho's natural resources. And then encouraging people to, to become involved, become educated, and ultimately for property owners to become stewards and active management of their, of their open and forested lands. So these are what's in the current town plan today that we kind of look to, to, to see, is this still applicable? How much of this is still applicable? Is this saying what we want it to say? So the priorities of the current plan, and I'll begin with, again, the, the natural environment, because I always start the planning process with looking at the natural context. Now, the natural environment provides that foundation that we build our community upon. It, it is underlies what are, what the systems are that we use to, to build human settlement. It, it defines the physical character of the place we're in. It defines the, the assets and the strategic advantages that we have as a community over, over any other community. So beginning with that context, the current town plan, this is the future land use map in the current town plan. Approximately seventy-eight percent of the, of the land area of the town is identified as, as either natural resource or working lands within the, the forest, open space, and rural residential and agricultural district that, that are illustrated in the zoning ordinance. Over the years, Jericho has done an incredible job of, of researching and documenting the variety of natural resources, natural systems, natural features that comprise Jericho. And these are just some maps that illustrate what some of those features are. This information has then been consolidated and prioritized, which is an added step that a lot of places really don't usually get to in understanding what's most important of all of these resources in our community. And those are identified as primary conservation areas. It's about twenty-eight hundred acres in the town. Secondary conservation areas comprise it another nine thousand acres, thirteen hundred acres of wetlands and associated buffers, and over seven hundred acres of flood hazard area and stream buffer. So these again define what some of the priorities are for natural resource protection as well as constraints to future development. Almost eleven thousand acres in the town of Jericho has been protected already. These are lands that are part of the range, part of holdings of the Vermont Land Trust or the Jericho Underland Trust, the University of Vermont. It's a significant portion of the town that has already has some form of permanent protection. Again, based on and built on the natural features we know to exist and what our priorities are as a community. Jericho has a lot of working land. Three hundred and thirty-three different field sites, or twenty-seven hundred acres that are in agricultural use according to the Natural Resource Conservation District. Fifty-nine parcels that are in the current use program. Most of those are under forest management, almost four to one in the forest management versus agricultural program. So if you take lands that are identified and in the current use program or lands that have been protected by one form or another, it's over fifty percent of the land area in the town has some measure of protection or, and or long-term management on it. That's incredible. The other side of the coin, and the priorities of the plan, are the areas where concentrated development is, is the priority. The areas in the red are the village centers and the village district, totaling about ten percent of the land area. And the area in the yellow is the, is the low-density residential district, another about twelve percent of the land area. So current land use, about fifty percent of the properties are in some form of residential use. The, according to the grand list, the grand list kind of breaks out, single-family residential on less than six, less than six acres, and that that's on more than six acres. It includes condominiums and, and commercial apartments as well. But, but fifty percent of the land area is residential in one form, less than five percent of it is commercial. So the remainder of that is then forest land, agriculture, and some miscellaneous category that, that it seems to be a hodgepodge of various different types of land ownership, land holdings, land uses. Again, this is based on, on the current grand list. If you zoom in on the villages, again, the land use pattern, the red, traditionally in, in land use maps, things that are, things that are in the red spectrum are, are commercial of some form or another. Things that are in yellows are residential. So you see two different colors of, doesn't really look like yellow on the screen, kind of looks like a light green, but those are the, the larger lot and smaller lot residential. The, the reds show up pretty well. This is Jericho Center over here, Jericho Corners, the Commercial District, and Riverside. And some of the development constraints in these areas. These large dark green blobs are a part of a priority conservation area that are habitat travel corridors. And as, as you can see, when you look at Jericho Center, a significant proportion of that district is, is covered with some sort of, of a travel corridor for habitat. So that's something to be aware of and be thinking about in terms of how development, future development happens in that part of town. The same with down here, really in the intersection between Riverside and the Commercial District, there's a large area of wildlife travel corridor. But other than that, other than wetlands, wetlands and flood hazard area along the, the Browns River, much of this land remains open for development. This is soils, so the red soils that are not well-suited, poorly suited for onsite septic, whereas the greens and the yellows are moderately to well-suited onsite septic. Again, this bodes well for the opportunity to do infill development, whether it's on an individual lot or through some sort of a community septic systems. There's a fair amount of land here that, that can receive onsite septic. I didn't have a lot of data on where development has been going over time. This is just for, for 2021. Nineteen single-family homes and two ADUs were built in 21. One of them in a village center, fourteen of them in the village district, and the remaining six were distributed between the low-density residential and the rural agricultural district. That's actually really good. From a percentage basis, almost eighty percent of the new housing units that were built in that one year were built where you said they should go. You're not, as least evidenced by this one year, there's not a lot of spillover into other parts of the town where resource conservation, resource management are the priorities. So I think that, that's a good indicator in and of itself. So overall, some observations, the framework for the land use plan is consistent with state goals. It's consistent with the Ecos Plan. The, the villages in Jericho are identified as villages within the Regional Planning Commission's Ecos Plan. I'm there. I'm not sure what the current status of it, but I know that some months ago, I had a conversation with the Regional Planning Commission about bringing those boundaries better aligned as the Regional Planning Commission is updating their land use plan. But that's something that's happened over time. And I think the underground experience broadly reflects, you know, the broad pattern, the, the goals of the broad pattern of concentrated development in the villages and, and management of, of, and protection of resource lands. Some important things to think about here, though, is that what new development that is happening, happening, which isn't a lot, is mostly going where you want it to go, but it is dominantly single-family residential. Non-residential use is very limited, and multifamily residential, this is very, very limited. So you're getting, there is some development happening, but it's not happening at a, at a, at an intensity that really meets the needs of the community. And we'll talk about those things much more as we get into talking about housing and talking about the economy. But just understanding what's happening where, that's something that, that needs to be a focus of this plan. There's quite a bit of land area that remains available for more compact mixed-use development in and around the villages. But the biggest constraint to any of this is the lack of waste water. Some cases, the lack of water, but predominantly the lack of wastewater capacity and the ability to build on smaller lots. Most of these, many of these are, are single acre lots. And to be able to do development at something less than a single acre lot is really going to require some partnerships or collaborations amongst property owners and the town in order to develop wastewater infrastructure. The other factor, particularly in development in the village areas, is a discretionary regulatory review process that, other than the individual, single-family home that happens here and there, or an individual commercial use, anything else of significance happens as a PUD. And a PUD is, is a discretionary review process that takes a lot of time, takes a lot of money, and is the kind of thing that a lot of developers will try to shy away from because of the uncertainty that's associated with it. That it makes it so much more expensive. It makes it so much more fraught with challenges that it's not worth their time and energy. Therefore, it's not economical. And that then has a huge factor, and you're not seeing the development in these parts of the town. That has a huge factor on the availability and affordability of what we have.
David, sorry, can you address that? Last year, we made it possible through changes in our zoning regs to have duplexes and triplexes and even quadruplexes in any of the village centers as a permitted use. Does that still fall under the PUD requirements, or now that it's a permitted use, is that going to be removing a barrier for that?
Certainly making that a permitted use removes a barrier, but you couldn't have two single-family homes on an individual lot without going through a PUD process.
But you can have a duplex on a single-family house.
You can have a duplex, so it's a single structure.
As well, single structure.
Single structure with, with two or three units in it, in it. But particularly given some of the, the size of many of the lots, configuration of, of many of the lots, you know, if you could actually put a second building on, on a, on the same lot with a shared driveway, you could get even more. But again, PUD is the only way you're, if, again, it's pretty common is the only way that you're gonna be able to have more than a single principal structure and principal use on a lot. So that's just one factor in within how. So I'm just gonna keep, keep moving here. Rural land, open space. This is really the foundation of what we think of as our rural landscape. The, the rural, the, the rural character of Jericho and, and much of Vermont is really comprised of these two different elements. The natural resource systems and natural resource features of our community and the working lands and, or the former working lands. And then, but in many cases, there are lands that are, can still be available for use. And a significant portion of the landscape is already, has some measure of protection. That's huge. And the current regulatory standards really appear to be working to help reduce fragmentation of both the natural systems and working lands. There are a lot of area, areas of former agricultural land where there's an opportunity. Land that's maybe just getting brush hogged once a season, land that is getting haked once or twice a season, or land that's, that used to be, used to be farmed, or used to be pasture. It may not be today, but it remains a resource in the future should someone be willing and able to make use of it. That's a, that's an important resource, I think, that to be thinking about when you think about what happens with the rural landscape. If we want to have local agriculture, we want to have local agricultural products. We want to keep our landscape open and scenic. That land needs to be able to be put to use. That's really an important component to it. There are a number of important use corridors throughout Jericho. There's some work that has been done looking at kind of scenic assets and scenic qualities, but not terribly comprehensive. As I recall, much of that study that I looked at, the work was done in Essex. And then some of that kind of Essex side of, of Rufus and the like, there's what was a little bit in Jericho, but not a whole lot.
This is viewed from the road.
Typically, views from the road, some cars, views from public places. Right.
Hopefully walking.
Right.
In place of.
So I I think check actually sparks an important point. When we talk about views, it's really important when we think of it in the context of of a local plan. It's not about protecting public use, it's about protecting public use. So where does the public have access to important views and the views of important resources, views of views of important features of the community? That's what's, that's what the the public's interest is in views. So moving on here, and this is where we get into a little bit more of a conversation about this, I hope. Future landings. This should look pretty familiar. The only difference here is where the village areas, I buffered them out a half a mile. And understanding that properties that are within walking distance of your village centers are also key opportunities. Where, you know, you you may or may not in kind of the the current planning literature, there's great talk of the fifteen minute city. Well, the fifteen minute city is about people being able to walk, to bike, to pay pay public transit to all of the things that they need on a regular basis. So it's that thinking of, these are our centers of development in Jericho. If you're within a half mile of them, you can easily walk to them. Those are things where we maybe think about what might happen here in a different way. So it's it's just a framework, it's not necessarily, I'm not necessarily suggesting that these ought to be village centered as well, but it's a way of thinking about this is, these are places too that can serve future opportunities for growth. Where capacity for for growing the community, growing the housing stock, growing the economic opportunity is best suited.
Can you pause just for one second, just to make sure I understand, because I thought that I had seen on a previous slide that the Jericho Center because of the natural corridor was not an area that could manage more growth. Did I put those two together wrongly?
Well, no, no, not at all, because when we think about these natural resources, they're in places where we need to concentrate growth and we're look, we're seeking the seeking to concentrate growth, sometimes trade offs have to be made.
Okay.
And we have to understand when it comes to natural features and and wildlife corridors and flood the hazard areas, you know, are there ways to mitigate the impact here? Mit mitigation can become more challenging depending on what the issue is. But it's, but again, if Jericho Center is a village that we want to continue to invest in the vitality of that area, then understanding how do we do that while at the same time addressing the fact that this is important, travel corridor, one block or another. So priorities in in the growth areas of the town, places where we would want to see future growth and development, community infrastructure has got to be right at the top of the list in order to be able to to achieve both the 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 compactness of the development that you want, but also the range of the types of uses, particularly if you're looking at businesses that are serving food, creating food products, things that require a fair amount of water in their processing. That infrastructure, both water and wastewater are going to be really important. Looking at the the town regulations to enable the creation of of new and more compact mixed use development, particularly looking at lot sizes and setbacks. You know, one example being that in the zoning today, you allow for a certain lot size in a village district under conventional review process, but if you do a PUD, you can get a significantly smaller lot size. You know? Is there a way to get that significantly smaller lot size without the discretionary review process? And you make that process happen in an objective way by right. Creating interconnected networks of streets and sidewalks and paths, all allowing for people to be able to to move and 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 interact with one another, access daily goods and services without the need of a car in and around these village centers. Reinforcing the existing patterns of existing patterns and scales of development, so that new development fits within the context of these those of the existing village areas. It doesn't need to replicate it, but it needs to to fit the pattern and fit the basic scale and form. And encouraging any new development that's built in that is goes into these village centers is primarily focused on walking and biking as the primary means of ability. Yes, people are going to drive their cars, people are going to need places to park their cars. But if a place is built for walking, people will be able to walk. But if it's not, if it's not, that's not the thought process going into how these places are designed and how these places are organized, then it it's much harder. When it comes to the natural systems, again, you're protecting those those important functions and values that, but of the natural resources, but also the ecological and economic integrity of the forested blocks and those open, that open farming. How do we keep these lands vi economically viable and 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 open and used? They're used for the natural resources that they traditionally have been used for, then they're also they provide that scenic landscape, they provide opportunities for community recreation. And all of those things underpin one of the biggest objectives of of that I know is important in this town as well as others, and that is mitigating the effects and adapting to the effects of climate change. These natural resource areas are huge players in how we both adapt and mitigate our impact. Revising plant unit development, site planning standards, again, to where where are there opportunities to ensure that we do even better job of reducing fragmentation and mitigating the impacts of any scattered development in the outlying areas. So I want to talk about the next three slides in a little bit more detail. So these are the village and village centers with a half mile buffer on them. And thinking about in order to be more targeted and to be more direct in what it is you're trying to achieve. Saying that eighty percent of all, as a goal, eighty percent of all future development happens in these areas. Eighty percent of all the housing units that were created in the last year happened in these areas. That's a good start, but as a policy goal for this plan, laying that out. And thinking about within these sites, what happens in them. So within the existing village centers, within within a half a mile, you would anticipate a wide range of residential and non residential uses that are being encouraged. So it's not just a single family home, but it's duplexes, it's triplexes, it's ABUs, it could be more. It could be, you know, maybe it's an existing building that that within its existing footprint could have ten units in it. May maybe there are opportunities for other multifamily houses, but a wide range of residential uses, a wide range of non residential uses concentrated in these locations. Within the existing village district, a mix of multifamily and single family residential. Again, when we're talking multifamily, we're not talking about forty forty unit buildings, but we're, again, we're talking about that missing middle. Duplexes, triplexes, ADUs, places where we're getting and have the opportunity to create more units where they can be served by by water, community water and or onsite septic. And within the Commercial Industrial District, some residential use, but perhaps more commercial industrial uses to happen there. Really looking to implement, speak to and implement what the master plan that you did a couple of years ago for that district. I've highlighted on here a couple of key areas that are really important opportunities for future development. Riverside property, the the Tatro Development Site. There's a tremendous opportunity there as well as the 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 fire department property in the center. Here are, here are places where the town really should be concentrating. All of the places on the map, but those two sites in particular are places for the town to really be focused on. How do we facilitate the redevelopment of these sites? Add a add a concentration, add a mixture of uses in order to get what we want. Again, that mixture of residential uses, that mixture of non residential. So I highlight those as as really key opportunities and places to prioritize. What are your thoughts?
About everything you just said, or just those last two things you just said?
No, particularly the last two things I just said, but anything else regarding.
I would certainly agree with Riverside as a very as an appropriate choice. Not as sure about the Jericho Center, just because there's a been a desire in the town to have that as a natural area more than a developable there, developed area. So that might run a little counter to the idea of keeping it as the farm fields and everything else that it is right now.
And and I think it's the kind of thing perhaps, and I may be wrong here, where if you drill in a little bit more and understand how much of that property is already within the Village Center District and how much is outside of that? You know, is there an opportunity to to have some of both?
Well, I think a significant opportunity there is the community septic potential, right? And that's huge.
That's where I think until we have the kind of the results of the on the septic usability study done, it'll, it's hard to kind of get into the details too much here, but understanding that because it property that's owned by the fire department with an interest in selling it to the town, that, you know, that's been an ongoing discussion. There's an opportunity, once the the town has ownership over something, then the town's in a position to to really try to make something happen. If you're drilling and and hoping that somebody else will do do something, you're starting in a harder place.
I guess along those lines, I think we we really need to push the community septic for Riverside. It it's, I don't understand, I don't think we should wait for this survey to be studied, to be done. I think if it's going to be done at the school land, we already know how much land there is. We can quantify the potential and we should build to the maximum potential because it'll be used.
Yeah.
And we already have the land. So I don't understand why that isn't moving forward. I think it, I think we really need to push that.
And you're, and you already have a site plan for the redevelopment of the.
And according to the school board, it's not come to them yet. So I I was under the impression that the holdup was the school board, but that's, I don't.
The school board is willing and and serious about doing this and accommodating it.
Right, so I don't understand what the holdup is, and so I think we we just really have to push that.
So priorities amongst priorities.
Yeah, and I I think part of our new town plan, I would suggest should be specific goals and dates. So that say by the end of twenty five or twenty six, whatever, we pick a date, we have community septic and Riverside done. And then we refer back to it and hold ourselves accountable.
Trying to come up with a place where I I can make some of my own notes, but it doesn't go up on the screen.
Other Planning Commission questions, comments, feedback? Sarah, chime in, because we are looking at David's screen, not.
Yeah, I I concur. I feel like everything that Chris said. We need a date, we need a plan. We need to get to the bottom of what the roadblock is and move forward to the full capacity available.
I think another piece that comes to my mind, I was looking at the stars you put in there, look more like suns and stars, but this is a star, so maybe it's all the same. One of the limitations we're having in Jericho Corners is septic capacity. And Jericho Corners just happens to be pretty much downhill from everywhere else. So perhaps it's worth looking at that space right on the Essex border, there's some pretty nice looking flat land there that might be very good for septic as a way where we can get not three separate septic fields, but one really good one. Probably a larger investment, but it would create more opportunity throughout the town.
So just looking it's almost in both cases, whether Jericho Corners or Riverside, you know, the potential for community septic may lie just beyond the edge, right, just beyond the town border. Maybe if you heard of this, is in is in underhill on the other side, but looking looking far and wide. I, Linda and I have talked, and I think Linda has mentioned with the with some of you, that the range is looking for, looking for septic capacity, you know, is there a partnership there? But it's going to take partnerships to make this happen, and it's gonna probably require the town to play a leading and a facilitating role to make that.
I have a few comments. So I think it's way too milquetoasty for me in that it's very reassuring because many of the goals are kind of vague and you pointed out data that we're kind of coming sort of kind of close to some of those goals. And yet, we know that we're really not achieving goals that are really important. Walkability, bikeability, housing variety, community, senior care. You know, there's, there's like all this hunger, and so I look at it and I think like not start over exactly, but I guess I'm willing, and this, I guess, maybe is a question for the Planning Commission, is like we're eventually going to be taking a draft to the public. I'd rather like be bold and get shot down and say, no, 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 we really don't want all that change rather than very sort of incremental change that people won't even really notice. So you've noticed, I think, David, since working with us for several months, that the town is really in a point of transition. We've been very laissez faire. The town has not invested in infrastructure. The town has tried to have very modest and incremental change because people like it the way it is. And yet, the town, which is, you know, all the volunteers and all the government entities are all sort of circling around this, you know, elephant in the room, like actually we might really think that it's way past time to invest and make changes and take the bull by the horns and be active. So I think about the town plan as like expressing that strategic shift and actually communicating. It's not the same game in town, and that way we can get feedback on it. Like, I don't, I think if we don't if we don't call a spade a spade, it won't really be noticed, and then we don't really know if we have the support for the things that we're contemplating doing. So like in particular, I had, as you were going through, like in particular. So you're saying land use, you know, we've done some pretty good things, but we haven't done everything we want to do. My question back to you is, how does the land use chapter of the town plan, how do we leverage it to improve our track record? That's what I want to do, is improve the track record. If the land use chapter isn't going to help us do that, then why do we need a land use chapter, you know what I'm saying? And when there there's goals listed, they're very generic, they they, we don't, and I'm not criticizing, you didn't write this plan. You know, a hundred people wrote this plan, I don't mean to be dissing. You know, a hundred people wrote this plan, I don't mean to be dissing prior people's work, it's more like. It's, it's different now, so there are no beneficiaries identified in each goal. So each goal is either benefiting the people, it's benefiting the environment and wildlife. It's benefiting maybe the economy, you know, who is the beneficiary of the goal should be explicit. In the goal, so we understand if it's actionable, if we can get it done in two years, or if it's just like. You know, blah, 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 planning, blah, 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 sounds good, matches up with what everybody else says. Um. The next thing is, I think the li- the town, the land use chapter should direct. The planning commission, because it's not gonna be all, all of us, you know, we got other things to do. Is to really like take a really hard look at density, the whole concept of density. Is driven by sort of like two motivations, as far as I understand, as a layperson, not a planning professional. Septic capacity, like how many people can safely fit? And do all their life things on this land, what can the land support? And whether it's this land or that land over there that I send my stuff to, and the other thing that density has to do with is pattern. And they're not the same, right, there's. Physical, what the land has to do for you, and then pattern, which is. How much money it costs to have the roads and how crowded things are and how it, you know, what the, and I do. I do appreciate incremental change, I'm not saying suddenly Jericho needs to be Essex or Williston or anything like that. It's more of a strategic shift than an on the ground per se, but. So I think the land use chapter needs to, to, needs to charge the PC with like. Totally think outside the box on density, if all we do is go from acre to half acre and half acre to quarter acre. We're just playing with the numbers, because I think the question should be, why should the town be regulating this at all? And if the, if there's not a direct beneficiary, public interest. Maybe the town doesn't need to have an opinion about it, maybe. The landowners and the neighbors should have the opinion about it, like. What, just because the town has had an opinion about how many people per acre before. I, I don't think, doesn't mean, and I'm speaking for myself and I'm totally want to be challenged, um. In the future land use map. We absolutely must illustrate some vision, some hope. Of a connection between Jericho Center, Riverside and the Corners, the whole triangle. Whether it's like an electric bus or an underground train or a trail, or I, I don't know, or cross-country skis, I don't know what it is. And also in the future land use map. We, we've been looking at other town plans, and it became, it became apparent recent, in a recent conversation that. The Richmond Village Center ends on Brown's Trace, which is very rural for Jericho. I don't, I, I don't, in all the time I've been on the planning commission, that's not really ever been. Entertained, and so you know how you're, you're doing your half mile. If we're thinking regionally, instead of every little town doing their own thing. If the Richmond Village Center should be expanded by your fifteen minute. Radius, what does that do for that part of Jericho, are there more development opportunities? Yeah, that, I mean, Camels Hump, the school is right there. Um, which also, when you say the, the land use. Something that's so dominant in our conversations about why people live here are the schools. And everything is centered on the village centers, but I think the land you should also. Be centered on the schools. As if it, it's not a village center, I know, understand like politically and meaning. As a designated area from the state, but in terms of like. As a planning element that we should be thinking about in terms of walkability and. Housing density, the village centers is one element, but I think the schools, fortunately, they overlap in two of them, but. The high school is kind of a third, I, I think I would like to see the, the schools. Illustrated somehow in the land use map as like an important component. Um. And then similarly, the land use chapter, I think, should charge the planning commission with. Reducing the regulations and simplifying the regulations, just like we want to do with the town plan, right? We, town plan's three hundred pages, we all want it to be twenty, the land use regulations are three hundred pages and, um. It, I mean, they're a bear.
They're regulating what's really.
Yes, and so the town plan is basically the marching orders. So I'm asking for the marching order from the community, I'm saying, don't you guys want us to do this? Because that's really, I think, what we need to do, and then the last thing, I think. Kind of going back to the very first thing, which is, there's sort of a new, there's not a new sheriff in town, because there's not a new sheriff in town, but there's a new mindset. In town, which is for the town to be more proactive. And I don't mean the town, like we say to the select board, you do it, I mean us, as a community, what we want to have happen. If we're gonna be more. Um. Strategic and energetic and creative and work together more. Then we should also explicitly, I think, the land use chapter should charter the planning commission to actively partner. With businesses, nonprofits, and developers to achieve our goals, because these are goals. And what we can do is create carrots and sticks. And we can make investments, but ultimately, it's a private market. And we want to partner with people. Who are taking risk and spending money and making it happen and saying like, we'd like a. Primary care clinic here, we'd like a pharmacy here, we'd like a rec center here, and so the, I think, if the planning commission. Or other entities of town were more empowered by the town plan, the town plan currently doesn't say. Go do this and get it done by twenty twenty five, it says, maybe, and let's research it, let's study it. And I think this group is saying. We don't want to do that anymore. We, you know, and that, that's my interpretation of what I'm hearing, so I totally invite. You know, agreement, disagreement, whatever, but to sort of put it out there. And, and if, you know, if we get chopped up for it, well, what, at least we.
Right, but can I ask a couple, before we go on, can I ask a couple of questions? Though, because most of what I heard you saying was really focused on. Actually, what happens in these places? What, how much? You know, the, the range abuses, the intensive uses, uh, how do we make those things happen? When we're talking about, at least at this level of the, the li- the land use. Uh, pattern, the future land use map, it's really about the where, where do we want development to be concentrated? Where do we want development not to be concentrated? Because when we start talking about housing and economy and infrastructure, that's where we get into the details of. How many housing units over what period of time, what proportion of them should be perpetually affordable, that's where that, that kind of language. Really should land, um, when it comes to, uh. E- economy or infrastructure, community services, you know, there need to be, you need daycare. Uh, in these places, we need these range of businesses that, that currently don't exist in the town in order. Uh, make it so people don't have to drive to Williston or, or Essex, that's where we get into that level of detail. For right now, it's about. Is this basic pattern still one that the town supports and wants to drive? You want to drive it. Better, you want to make more happen in these places. But are you suggesting, or would you be suggesting that, no, we want to build, we want to have another village center someplace else? Or we want to take this, we don't care about this, you know, this part of the. Uh, of the center and we, we don't want to focus development there. I'm, I'm not hearing any of that.
So I think, if I could add in a couple of things, I think we are hearing a little bit of that in Susan's idea, let's also map. The schools.
Especially when it comes to MMU.
Right?
Yeah.
So that would be a very concrete, like that is not on this map right now, and so if we talk about growth areas, we lose that. It's limited to here, so, so that is one. Piece that I would reflect on Susan's. Statement, but in this other one, I was gonna say, just to follow up with what you were saying. I think some of the, the, um, the lead got buried. As it were, in the presentation of. What are, um, if we were to choose that these are the areas of growth? Maybe adding school, you also gave us some really interesting, I thought, some very clear directives. That we could choose to give ourselves or give the town plan and. Based in the two things that were listed as impediments that then came up later. As recommendations for growth and one being the lack of wastewater. That was the impediment, and the other was the, the unpredictable discretionary regulatory review. That if we were to direct the town plan to remove, to invest in one and remove the other. That actually is very actionable and could be very focused, like though, just taking those two and giving them more. Teeth, as it were.
Right.
We could create very strong, strong goals and expectations around those two things in the town plan that. Would say, yeah, this is kind of where we want things, add in the schools, and this is the primary ways in which. We could use our existing tools. Potentially, because we have money to invest, and we have the power of regulation to a certain extent to change. Without necessarily relying on. And the carrots of trying to get external developers or others to invest. So that, I, I actually was feeling pretty good about that, but it felt like the lead got buried. So I don't want to pump those up. Into the, the languages that we would use. Around where, like, like, and. If these are, and create stringent, more stringent goals for ourselves collectively about. How much, you know, if these are the concentrated places, what does it look like to, and to your point? Earlier about, well, didn't we already make changes in the zoning to allow? Denser development, yes, but there's still a couple of places where we can make it a little bit easier. By allowing two homes or lowering the density, anyway, I thought it, if that, that resonated with me, as long as we pumped up. Those stronger statements. Because they're actionable.
Yes. Absolutely, and, and. That's, that's where we're headed, is making those actionable, time-limited. Uh, statements about. Don't eat changes that do X, Y, and Z by some point in time.
Yeah.
Investments in community infrastructure in these places to prioritize the redevelopment of. Of these sites and these parts of the town, but I want to get back to the, the MMU question, because when I look at the land use map, it's. I, I struggle with, you know, having the high school kind of where it is, because it's. It's not in any of the villages, and it's, it's in an area that's identified as for, you know, low-density residential, but. You know, that's where the high school is, there's a lot of traffic going back and forth, the high school, you know.
Well, we had.
Do something different.
We surfaced the idea of, um, defining for ourselves the idea of a hamlet. Which, um, exists in other towns and could potentially have a regulatory. It ca- you know, regulatory set of rules around it. So that it doesn't necessarily have to be in, I mean, it's heavy lift to make another village center, designate a village center. Um, necessarily think that that's needed, I mean, because you, you'd really want to drive housing.
Right, well, call it what you will, but. Would you imagine? That. The land use plan identifies the area. Around the high school as a place for. More compact. Residential development.
I guess I'm not, I, I'm, um. I agree that the schools are a natural place to congregate housing, but I feel like. MMU is not ill-placed as it is, I feel like it's right in the corridor of. This triangle between the three centers is already there, so I, my feeling is that we double down on the density for. That corridor, which is. Village centers, the village district, and the low-density residential, then MMU is right there. So I'm not, I guess, um. I don't think it's so far from being what we want, um. I guess, Mike, and then sort of stepping back, I feel like this presentation. Is more about, uh. Setting the context. Yeah, I, I didn't really feel like the presentation was about. Sort of re, of what to do with the land use section.
Going forward.
Going forward, I feel like it was more about where, what it is now, sort of setting the context, I didn't, because I don't feel like, um, because I. Totally agree that. If we don't make some dramatic changes going forward, nothing is gonna happen, and I really think. That aside from. The town plan, if the town, the structure of the town government doesn't change. We might as well not be here, because the town, we just doesn't have the. Uh, bandwidth to do anything, so I think, um. The select board should be bigger, if we're gonna keep this like board, which I'm not. You know, I think it should be bigger, and I think the town needs a dedicated town manager who. Has the time and the bandwidth to actually manage these product, projects and make them happen. And if we don't get that, then I'm not sure it matters so much what we do with the town plan. Because, um, I think the town, the three-person select board as it is, is set up to sort of. Maintain, but not to move forward, um, so I think that's. That's gotta underlie all of this next chapter in the town, if we want to really have any of these things happen.
Can you maybe go back to your slide that had, you have priorities for the new town plan? You have a slide that says priorities for the new town plan, it's not this one, it was like two slides ago.
But I do, I don't agree with you, Susan, about, um. A totally hands-off approach with the land use.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't either.
It's an interesting.
Yes.
If, if, I think it, there's too much development that is about to happen. That, I mean, for the first two hundred years, um, it was fine, because there weren't that many people, and. The land use was kind of obvious and sort of naturally evolved, but I don't think that's gonna be the case going forward.
Right, but I think we should really challenge ourselves to, to really. Justify.
But none of the density matters if we don't have the infrastructure.
Exactly, right, it's just a dream.
I mean.
So.
What we should be doing, and what the town plan is supposed to do. Is to set the conditions where someone can come in and grow and develop it. We allocate this area is where we think is a growth area. Here's where the infrastructure should be to support that growth, the town is not gonna build house. We have to make it easy for the developers and the landowners to do that, and that's our job on the planning commission to say. We want it to be easy here, a little bit harder here, no, you can't build there. That's what the town plan is supposed to do, it defines where the growth is coming, how it's gonna come. And what steps we in the town are going to take to encourage growth where we want it. We've identified that in the village centers, we've identified an obstacle, which is a lack of infrastructure. Our town plan needs to talk about how we make it possible for a developer to come in and say, there's gonna be infrastructure here. You can come in here and build it. We in the town are not gonna build that infra- that housing, we're not gonna go in and put up a thirty-unit apartment building on the town. We don't have the money for it, we don't have the town willingness to pay for it. But we can say, this is where the infrastructure is gonna be. This is gonna be zoned for that kind of density, so now, you developer, we've opened up the door for you. Come in, build. That's, that's what we're trying to do.
But the town also can, and I think must, be a much more active participant in these projects going forward.
Beyond putting infrastructure in place. What more do you want the town to do?
They could buy a piece of land and say, I'm gonna give it to you, if you build me ten units of affordable housing, I will give you the land. I will. I will help you finance this over, over the long haul, um, I will give you incentive tax pick relief. If you build me this ten-unit affordable housing project.
So you're both right, it's a compendium. You begin with the plan, which is the policy says this is where we want growth to happen, the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations define. How and what form and what intensity that can happen, it kind of helps to set the stage, and then to the extent to which. You have the resources and capacity, then. You become more and more and more proactive to acquiring land, building the infrastructure. Partnering with, with for-profit, nonprofit developers to actually build things, but, you know, that. You, you might, you might get that far. you you might, you might get that far on a partial virtual land where um the town identifies that as a player. You you may not, but you at least need to sell.
Can I now come back to the?
Actually Heidi, before you go, I just wanted to do a time check. So we have about five more minutes to talk about this uh within the planning commission. I heard you sort of throw out a very specific question like where are these still the areas which I want to just also maybe pull it back a little bit and say, we're not making any decisions tonight. We haven't yet heard from the public. We're gonna have a community forum. We're not the final arbiters of this topic. It's where we're throwing stuff out there, like I said, intention like, you know, not we're so nobody needs to get worried that anything's being decided. Nothing's being decided anytime soon. We're just trying things on, okay?
A work session.
Yes, it's a work session. And after we have another few minutes among the planning commission, then we're gonna open it up to some public comment. So I just want to make sure the planning commission is aware of that so that you just have a few more minutes to go. Okay, Heidi?
Yeah, I was gonna come back to the where.
Okay, good.
If that's okay, can we go back to the the map that you had at the very end there of the areas? Cause just coming back to, and it could be my my newness and not understanding what we can and cannot do. But Susan, you mentioned where MMU sits and Chris, you talked about the triangle. Is it within our ability? Or as Dave, as as um Dave said, does it, you know, without calling it what we're calling it, but could we conceivably call out that? No, in fact, while we have the three centers and the the commercial district, we're actually talking about the whole swath. That would include MMU and sort of the triangle. So is that something that we could recommend if we wanted to?
One thing we have to be aware of is that spot between the ore road and Brown's Trace. I'm not sure how suitable that is for development topographically.
Right.
So if we're gonna include that in the area, which gets us down to MMU, it's kind of hard. I think it would be wonderful to say around, hey, you know, three hundred, four hundred feet either side of the MMU borders, a circle. Go nuts.
Well, yeah, and I'm thinking that there would have to be, of course, bookings into the soils and the waters and all the other kinds of overlays that we have for other things, but at least naming it as an intentional place.
For growth.
For growth and looking at it, given whatever the feasibility would be, but instead of having it not because the not having it here mean could be interpreted as therefore it it doesn't have the same kinds of intentionality for growth.
Is it a separate node? Is it an extension of uh Jericho Center in some form or another, understanding that, yes, there are parts of this that, parts of that area that, you know, you want to see developed in other parts of it that you may not, but is it is an expansion of that?
Well, you were talking about the corridor, like Brown's Trace. From the school to the corner to Riverside.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think that you could, the easiest way to uh sort of get our minds around this collectively is probably just to look at the current land use zoning map. And if you just, I, in my opinion, you could just include the low density residential.
So here's the low density residential area.
I think that
Four-way intersection.
Which includes MMU. I think you could sort of, i- in my opinion, you could double down on the or triple down or whatever on the density of that whole corridor. Um and MMU is, you know, sort of smack dab in the middle of that um.
So Chris, would that mean changing the density in that area is what you're saying?
Changing it from rural residential to or whatever.
Slow density residential. I I think, I think you could, uh and I
We'd be changing it into the other one.
Or the high density.
No, I think you would, well, I
Or something.
We could either change the 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 mapping or we could just change the density in each district.
But I think you, so what Heidi's asking is should the future land use map then include the blue low density residential as a greater subset of a growth development
I think so.
area. So that then that would be the strategic case for going into the low density residential and saying, is this density correct? Should it be higher? Should it be higher everywhere? Should it be higher just here near the school? I mean, that we'd have to go through due diligence to figure all of that out.
Yeah.
But it sounds like you're suggesting a more precise growth area that encompasses the three plus the blue.
That that I'm, that's what I'm wondering aloud. Whether that would then fit in with our goals of increasing opportunities for growth, but within areas that fit the other goals that we have.
I think that to to me, as I went through this chapter, I think if you uh constantly really double down on everything except the rural agricultural forestry and open space. Go crazy with the density on the other districts and then at the same time be really stringent about the development opportunities in those other districts. I think that gets us what we, sort of what we want.
It's like in investing, they call that the barbell approach. Where you have like all, you know, all of your development on this side of the barbell and then all of your conservation on that side of the barbell. Okay, we have to stop at say fifteen. Um so we're gonna open up the floor to public comment. I'm gonna first invite people from the room for public comment. Gonna remind you that we really ask that your comments be very focused on what we've just been discussing. Land use within the context of the town plan. We have other times and other opportunities for other public comment. And there's a lot of people here, so I want everyone to have a turn. If you would please keep your comments limited to three minutes. Knowing that this is not the last time that we're ever gonna talk about this. We're probably gonna talk about it a hundred more times. Um so does anybody in the room, thank you again for being here. Did anybody like to share questions or comments on what we've just been discussing about land use going forward?
If if you don't mind, I like to wait until some other
Okay.
People who are new are on line.
That's fine.
And I'd like to wait until after they.
Okay. SJ or Jim?
I'd like to do the same thing.
Okay, so the people in the room have yielded to the people on the Zoom. Okay, so um Sabina, would you mind bringing up the participant screen? And you know what? I think Zoom is great because look at all these people that are on the call that probably wouldn't have called off to the, to the um town hall to be here.
Okay, there you go.
Um, okay, so if you guys could, if you wouldn't mind, use the raise hand function. If you like to ask a question or make a comment.
What are the four comments there? On more?
It's not new.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yep. And if you are, had joined us before, after the meeting started. Um if you would please make sure you add your contact information into the chat. So does anybody on the Zoom have any questions or comments? Maria, you can unmute and please join us.
Hi, everyone. Just a quick comment going back to what um someone else already said. I I'm sorry, I don't know, know your name. About the maps and showing the uh one map that showed sort of the conserved areas with the blobs of green that were the wildlife corridor. And then the other map that showed the concentrated area for development and it seemed like there was a lot of overlap between that conserved area, um especially in the Riverside sort of a part of that Riverside District. Um so I wondered, um, you know, does what if you would comment on that? Like the, it seems to be, there is a conserved area. But then on another map, it's saying that's gonna be, you know, uh the greatest potential for development.
Right.
So how do you do that if it's conserved because it's a wildlife corridor?
Okay, so definitely, that's a really good question. So the terminology. Um I think we used maybe over overlapping terminology. So when David was first showing work that the town had done to map our resources and we had primary resources and secondary resources and he noted them as conserved areas with conserved, areas that were conserved because of the resources. That's actually, I think, probably um confusing because there, the land itself, where the, where those primary resources are or the secondary resources are, the land itself is not conserved. All it is, is identifying that this land contains these super special natural resources. And development that happens on this land needs to take in, needs to take into consideration that the resources are there and they need to develop in such a way that the resources are not destroyed. Um, the wildlife corridor actually has the least amount of um restriction and the least amount of standard and those standards are waived in the regulation, actually in some of the, in those more developed areas. Like in the commercial district for sure, and I think also in the village center, the current zoning says if it's a wildlife corridor, which is a mapped area, you have to do certain things and those certain things do not preclude development at all. They're just basically like, we need to all coexist.
Okay, thank you for that. That's, that's very helpful. And that was confusing when the word conserve.
Yeah, so maybe conserve.
Was used. Thank you.
Okay. Sabina?
Can I also just add that one of the things that the Conservation Commission is currently working on is um going back to some of those wildlife crossing areas and redefining them with within the ex- the um the area that have been already determined in that. We're going and looking at those areas and saying, how can we be more precise? Um, how can we eliminate some things that are just really not part of what would be a wildlife crossing? So that in the end, the the result would be that what we're calling a wildlife crossing actually has more meaning and gives us more guidance as to what to protect. Because if you have a blob that's been big, but it's really only this part that is critical, you know, or more critical. Then it helps us make informed decisions. And so we're, we're currently working on that process.
Great. And that's great. Uh Bernie. Hi Bernie, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for giving me that speak. Uh just as a follow up to uh what Sabina said, I uh and I, I think the Conservation Committee is probably working in this avenue as well, but relation to the proposition that transition town Jericho is going to put in front of the voters, uh something along the lines of is it is in interest of Jericho community to uh for some sort of communal ag land for growing food. Um I suggest that in, and again, Conservation Committee has clearly talked about this, but it really would be helpful if we could find a way, I think, to better quantify uh ag, what the consider, the state considers either prime or state ag land uh as a total number of acreage of undeveloped currently not being used as ag land. In other words, as David said earlier, sort of this potential. If we decided to have it be that for use as ag lands not being that used today. It it would be great to know numerically, what's the total acreage of that undeveloped land that's sitting there that's been defined as ag land. And then secondly, more ideally, uh you, we can look at that on the map viewer today, but we can't tell how many acres it is per parcel. So a parcel may, maybe three hundred acres and it may show some coloration showing that there's some ag land in there, but we don't know if it's ten acres or seventy-five or a hundred and fifty. So I I again, I'm hoping that somebody finds a tool at some point to quantify that. My second comment or question really is uh I know that being recorded as a video. But uh the David went over, uh he did, I think, a pretty good job of explaining it, but there's a lot of material to absorb. And it's kind of difficult going from one slide to another to sort of have enough time to think about it all. It it would be great if David be willing to post these, or maybe he's already intending to do that, posting the slides as stationary slides. So it's, so we don't have to watch the video and sort of like get to a slide and freeze. Uh thank you for taking the time.
Yes, okay, we will definitely be posting that that town plan web webpage is gonna be huge by the end. Bring uh Okay, so Bernie, you can bring your hand down and the next person I'm gonna call in is Dave Clift.
Hi, um this is Dave and there's a couple of things that come to my mind. And that's around uh the cart and the horse kind of approach of making uh Jericho a more vibrant community. Do we try to understand things that we want, such as the walking, biking links between the corners of the triangles, recreation facilities, active farms, affordable housings? Do we mold our town plan um land use that will allow these things to happen? Or do we look at our lands and say, this is the way it is and these dreams that we have, we can't fit into our plan? So what what's more important? Do we take the dreams that we have for the community and try to shape our right rules and regulations around those dreams? Or do we create a uh a plan that uh actually becomes a hurdles to those dreams? And you know, myself, I um li- I worked in Colchester for over twenty years. And Jericho, you know, was a place where I came to sleep at night. And you know, so I asked my myself, you know, can Jericho be a place where we live, work and play? And not just be a suburb of the town of Essex, Williston and Burlington? And how can this town plan you know, reflect that image and reflect those goals? Thank you for that chance to speak up.
Hey, thank you. Uh Bill Butler.
Hi, uh um I want to know if people uh feel that we've got a grip on the potable water supply for each of these designated development districts.
Okay, that's your question?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So David, do you want to answer those last two questions?
And we know that some of these areas have some forms of community water, um community wells, water districts and the like, but I don't have uh a detailed sense of what the total capacity is certainly and uh uh it's difficult to get good data on the extent of uh some of these services as well. But that's, again, that's like with wastewater, uh you need to have water capacity, uh you need to have wastewater capacity. You need to be able to manage your stormwater. Those, those three things are are critical. You have electricity too.
And there, I think there is some effort underway at the town level to be looking at water supply for Jericho Center or for everywhere. I'm look, you're looking at me like I'm making this up.
Estimating feasibility for wastewater infrastructure.
That I'm aware of, but I thought wasn't there gonna be, there was some talk about maybe also initiating a study around water.
Well, in our existing town plan, we have a list of all of the municipal and community water systems that are in the town that are known for.
Right.
And there's, there's, I think it's a good dozen and a half of them listed.
Right.
So what what I've been able to identify is here are all the wellheads. Which properties are being served by any one of these individual wellheads? Some, you know, that, that's a different question. That's it.
All right. So Bernie gave us some fact finding that, some homework that we're gonna be doing potentially over the next couple of months and water is definitely uh a data point that will be helpful to round out in terms of the um me of the cart before the horse. I'm gonna put that aside because I realize we still want to hear from the people here in the room. So does anybody else on the Zoom have a, wanna raise your hand? Not your last chance, but okay, so how about people in the room? If you'd like to make a comment, please keep it to three minutes. Yes, and if you would come forward to the microphone. Thank you very much for coming.
First of all, Susan, I I uh I just want to say I'm in awe of your introduction.
First of all, Susan, I, I, I just wanna say I'm in awe of your introduction to this and. David, you have presented kind of a plain vanilla thing, which is the place to take off from, and thank you for recognizing that, and I, I wouldn't change a word. And I really agreed with a lot of uh what Elsa said here. So I wanna build on some of the things that you said, Susan. One is this whole idea of density. And density is uh, can be looked at kind of a variety of ways. Um, you know, one of my favorite parts of Jericho is Lafayette Drive, where twenty-six houses were built on ten acres in nineteen fifty-nine. Uh, since then, the price of lumber's gone down and uh labor productivity has gone up, but. So those houses might have been more expensive to build. They've sold for a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in today's uh, in today's money. And I think somehow Jer- Jericho needs to change their mindset to look at a development like that and say, that is a great thing, just about. Any family that's grown up in Jericho has had children who had friends who lived on Lafayette Drive, just incredible engine, engine. Of sort of family um addition and growth uh into Jericho. Today, to build that development in most of Jericho would require buying three hundred acres. Which is a dumb land use uh approach. You know, you know, a, and that's, and, and, and which is why P U Ds don't work in terms of adding uh modest income housing. Uh, so we've gotta figure out more places and more ways where someone can build twenty-six houses on ten acres. And there are places in town where there's the water and the septic capacity to be able to do that. Uh, they just don't happen to be in some of the place, you know, we, we, we chose our town centers in seventeen ninety and we didn't choose them for um. You know, for water and septic. Next to me in Jericho Center is a young couple uh in their late twenties, I think. Uh, he is a Finnish carpenter and he describes it as I build, you know, high-end houses. Uh, the two of them live in a one-bedroom place, very tight, thirteen hundred dollars a month. I ask him, what is his dream? He'd like to get a little piece of land and to build a duplex or triplex, build it himself, do it with, could help from his family members. Uh, and, and, and make a life in Jericho. And uh, we have used zoning to make that impossible uh in Jericho. Um, and, and we need to, uh, I would love for that. Uh, that young couple to be able to get a quarter acre somewhere for thirty or forty thousand dollars and to fulfill their dream. Those origin stories of someone getting a piece of land and building a place or buying an old house, fixing it up. Coming in their twenties and living their life here, those are the people who end up being real leaders in Jericho. It's this, you know, the, and, and. We're sort of cutting off those, uh, we're cutting off those, you know, origin stories. I, I want that young couple to, to be able. Um, to do that.
Um, Chuck, I have to stop you there. That was three minutes. That's why my phone was so loud. I'm sorry. It was loud. Didn't need to have it be loud. It was shocking. I apologize.
Hey, look, if you keep him to three minutes, I'm awful.
Keeping him to three minutes. Okay, anybody else in the room have anything to say for three minutes?
I, I'd like to throw out some buzzwords and I wanna start with a comment, Chris. Um, we can make things happen, but you need enabling capability. You need a fire district to create the sewer district, to create the opportunity. To acquire the sewer rights and you need to be able to charge the developers for them. And do that capacity and that could start tomorrow. Um, not necessarily working with the existing fire district, but rather create a new fire district. Whose job is to work on solving the mission and the goals and the objectives of Jericho. I think in the land use planning, you need goals and objectives. In the land use, multimodal pedestrian drawn. On the roads. The golden triangle, Brown's Trace, Lee River, Route fifteen, that is the center of Jericho. All of this nonsense about the village centers is pure nonsense because it doesn't really work. Why has that been developed out there? Because there was a manufacturing facility there and the people walked to work. At the logging operation. So most of the centers had to do with water to run the power mill. And you don't have the logistics to be able to build that out. Jericho Center. And loud and clear, I'd like you to hear me. Deal with the risks to life quality and life safety that we have for the community that we have and then build on that. Loud and clear, right up front. We don't have clean water. We don't have fire protection. We do not have pedestrian safety. And right from the very beginning, you can write one page of what are our priorities? And that will guide this to a different direction, Susan, cuz I wanna echo what Chuck said. But if you wanna move it, you gotta change it. You can't do the same thing. And I wouldn't look the state statutes for anything other than the legal permission to do it. The misguidance that comes out of Montpelier has crippled the economy of the state of Vermont and caused the Lily White. Non-affordable nonsense that we have. And, and we're not gonna solve our labor problem. We're not gonna solve our manufacturing problem. We're not gonna be able to pay our school tax. If we don't make these changes and land use is not based upon little circles and stuff. It's based upon what's there and can, how it can be employed. Land use. I got a hundred acres, say, just take that as a model. And it's ten acres only. That's ten units. If you wanna take that away with your environmental stuff and all this other stuff. You need to give me a T D R that I can give to the guy who's got all those capacities and he writes me a check. You drop my assessment so as to no longer have a contest as to what my land is worth. And then that person has acquired the T D Rs. This is old technology. It's all proven. You can just go to the city of South Burlington and look at all the mistakes they made because they've been litigating it for ten years. So if you read those cases, you can do it tomorrow. Golden Triangle, that's three minutes?
That's three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You did a great job. That was the best ever. But like I said, this is not, you know, this isn't like the last chance, not like the Supreme Court. How do they do that? I don't understand. S J, do you have anything to add?
I mean, I feel like I have to, but I also feel like I, there, there are other, other opportunities. Um. So I think I'll just say that uh tonight's been really exciting. Um, and really energizing and sometimes uh I come away from some of these discussions feeling uh. A little despair and a little shut down and tonight I'm really excited. I'm really energized. I think it's important that we're willing to. Um, throw ideas to the wall, against the wall, be vulnerable, think big. I also think it's really exciting to bring more people into the conversation, welcome ideas and. Understanding that what's happened in the past is past, but there are. There, there is, what is going on with, with uh the school district and the septic and the rivers? There's a lot of things that I think that uh we can move forward just by being willing to talk to each other about them. Um, and yeah, so I'm excited and I'm glad this is just the first night of many. Uh, that we're gonna get to have these conversations and I, I look forward to hearing from more of our, of our neighbors.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I think as much as we'd all love to talk about this a lot more, we have to move on. Um, so David, did you want to look at all about the responses? To the question of the month? Did you feed that into the conversation?
The Sabina and Wendy put together.
Okay.
On a slide, I can put them on if you want to talk about it.
Um, I think we should at least display them and get them on the recording and get them in the minutes. Um, so that we can digest them a little bit as a, another bit of input. Since that represents people maybe who couldn't, who care, who couldn't be here.
And just to clarify, Sarah also helped.
Okay, great, thanks. And Wendy helped too, right?
Yeah, you, you mentioned Wendy.
Okay.
I didn't know Sarah did.
Okay, so maybe while you're bringing that up, there it is. Okay, so. Does somebody wanna walk us through this? Or should we just display it and comment?
What's interesting is we don't have something showing up as predominant as we did on the first set of questions.
Okay, so the question was, what do you find challenging or concerning about living or working in Jericho? I think we, we got eighty some odd responses.
So I have, I think you sent four, so I have all four of them.
Oh, just the land, if you could just show the land use ones. This was a land use one, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
Those are the questions from the kickoff meeting.
Yeah.
Right, those are the kickoff meeting ones.
Yeah.
So the first two were the land use ones. That one. Okay, so, and Sabina, approximately, how many responses did we get?
Eighty-eight.
Okay, approximately eighty-eight. Great, eighty-eight, that's fantastic. Not as many as the first time, so we wanted it to go up and it went a little bit down, but still more than twenty, that's great. So what this is showing is that the most challenging things to, to. The points that we heard a little bit during the public comment, not bike friendly was like the top response. Of what people find challenging about living here. So the word cloud, the sizes of the words indicates the frequency. That that was a theme of an individual response. These will also be posted on the website so people can look at them. And we'll use front port form to remind people that they're here. Okay, and then, so I think when we're talking about land use, that is. And, and we do want the land use to, we want the land to serve. This is my opinion, to serve the dreams, not have the dreams be limited by what the map. Currently says.
I just wanted to say one thing quickly looking at this. I think that some of those really are, could be combined. And therefore be bigger. Um, I'm thinking of the infrastructure, the wastewater. Uh, I, so I, I.
Broadband.
I feel like.
Public wastewater shows up twice.
Well, right, but slightly different, but um, so I feel like that's. Uh, more uh prominent than it displays.
Sure, and these are not, I mean, we, we can.
No, you know, we. Yeah, no, I know, I'm just, yeah, I just was observing that, that's all.
I should throw it up three times.
Okay, and then, then, then the next question, so we, we tried to channels people's ideas for solutions. Was um, or thinking forward about how future land use could maybe address those challenges without being quite so. Explicit. Um, so it's, it's interesting that it's kind of a mix of um. Good things about growth and fears and concerns about growth.
Yeah, and I will say, having read through the responses, that this question was. Challenging for people to answer in that some people responded that they were confused or unsure, so I don't know how much. Weight we wanna give this particular word cloud because of that. Um, there are some helpful responses in there, but I think, yeah, that. That some people were kind of mind boggled by like. What they should say or, you know, not knowing what the growth and development might be in the future, it'd be hard to answer a question after. How it could impact them. So.
Right.
I would say, you know, we've got some good information, but I don't know how much weight we should give this particular question necessarily. And I also want to say that, that, you know, that we also had a question about what, you know, what else would people wanna share? That there were multiple responses from folks that wanted to share their gratitude to the planning commission for doing such great work and allowing them to. Have input into these questions. So I wanna make sure that you all heard that tonight.
Oh, good, thank you.
And in those comments too, I was reading through these and those comments too, kinda help. Kinda illustrate either the folks that had some confusion, but then what they really wanted to say. There's, I, I found, and I don't know, you, we're way more detail than I sort of read them. But there's a pretty clear message in here, and I think you heard tonight, both online and here, of a support for. We, we need to do more. We need to do more where, you know, in these uh village areas and around the week. In order to, to have all of those things that we desire.
Okay, so that's perfect segue to, can we display the work plan so that everybody who's still with us? Wow, everybody's still here.
Questions.
Um, I think that's all we have time for right now.
We're from.
The other ones were follow-up sort of from the, from the kickoff. Um, which I don't know if you have, which is.
I don't know if I, I don't actually think I did the dot on there.
Okay, so then just to reiterate that. The next topic, so now Nancy and Erin, so we're moving to topic number eight. Which is to confirm the schedule for the town plan work session. So David, you showed your list of the four work sessions. Which is the P C basically hashing it out and some time for public input. In addition to that. We are planning a community forum on May third. Are we good with the dates and good with May third? That we can publish it, post it around? And really extend more invitations. Yes, this would help us too, cuz I can't remember it off the top of my head. Okay, so. February seventh, January seventeenth was our kickoff, February seventh, tonight is land use, March seventh. The planning commission will be at town meeting at a table. And we are happy and willing and hope and looking forward to speaking with as many people as we can. Lucy Goosey, just chat. Um, we might have our March question of the month, our February question of the month there for further. Responses, if it's still open. Yeah, because it's before March fourteenth. Okay, then March fourteenth, we have a joint meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee and our topic like tonight. Will, but the topic will be housing opportunities. April eighteenth will be about the local economy. May third is a large, broad community forum at the high school. Six thirty to eight thirty, gonna be exciting. There's gonna be dots and stickers and food and stuff like that. Um, May sixteenth, the planning commissioner will debrief from that forum. June sixth will be kind of the wrap up. And then all of this talking and studying and analysis will lead into a first draft. Of a new town plan, which we hope to put out into the community in the early summer. Okay, so that's, that's the plan. Okay, so based on that, we're gonna move to topic number nine without objection. Okay, topic number nine, the P C. So now, everybody who's on the phone, you are welcome to stay and I invite you to stay, but just to be forewarned that our next. Several items are basically administrative items, so you won't miss anything really if you don't stay. Okay, um, then they're all chiming in. Okay, so for the, for town meeting. So we requested a table and what I would like to do is just talk with the planning commission ideas. We don't have to decide this per se tonight, but. Can people look at your schedule and see, could you spend an hour at the table? What materials should we have at the table? How should we use town meeting? How should we use the table to engage with the public? One idea I had was we could extend the February question of the month to town meeting day. Because if we got, you know, twenty more responses there, that would be actually good and especially on paper cuz not everybody can be online. Um, possibly as an option, since it's about housing also, it's kind of a good topic.
Can I suggest?
Yeah.
I like that idea, but since we talked about already the challenges people had in answering the questions we have. Maybe roll out a different version of the questions of the month for it.
For, so.
For the town meeting day.
Yes, so for town meeting day, actually the next topic, we're gonna talk about new questions of the month. So those, what we just did was January, so now we're gonna do a new set of questions that's gonna be about housing. And um Linda had a document in the meeting materials about some questions about housing. I'm, I think.
I want us to bring it up on the screen.
I don't know, I'm looking at the time.
Okay.
You got ten minutes.
We have ten minutes, yeah. Okay, so let's bring it up on the screen. So this is to decide. Easy questions, accessible questions. That will inform our discussion about housing. And maybe next time, David, when we talk about housing, we should look at the question of the month sooner in the agenda. I, I think I, this was my order, it was in a good order. So. Linda and I hashed around these, there's three questions. What are your favorite neighborhood or residential areas in Jericho? Cuz not everybody lives or likes neighborhoods. What characteristics of these areas, probably not neighborhoods, does Jericho need more of? And then the third question was talking about housing types. What types of housing does Jericho need more of? Select all that apply. So just remember, the question of the month is not really intended to collect statistically actionable information. It's really taking the pulse. It's one more. It's one more way of reminding people, hey, we're working on the town plan. Come to our meetings. Hey, this is an interesting topic. Talk to your friends. It's not so hardcore like the questions, so think about it more as prompts. Wendy had had some feedback on these questions that she wanted us to consider. Her feedback was that did you already, you did you, you already changed it?
I might have tweaked a little bit based on her response. Did I?
Hers was, what characteristics, instead of asking about your favorite places, because that could be kind of gossipy in a way, I guess, what characteristics of a neighborhood or residential area would you see as positive characteristics? That would enhance quality of life or enhance well-being, like what what's good about any neighborhood? You know, I might know a neighborhood in Massachusetts, that's great. So it doesn't necessarily have to be Jericho. So that was her advice was not to be, and then she said, then her second question would be, where in Jericho do you see these positive characteristics? Please be as specific as possible.
Are we going to give examples?
Well, her her suggestion was not to give example, her, she was refraining from giving examples, but she said, obviously, she can't be here. And we're all welcome to discuss it as we can. I also want to say, we're not going to decide this tonight. So the point tonight was, talk about it a little bit, get us thinking, we'll finalize it next time. And we can exchange thoughts with Linda through email before our next meeting. Next meeting, we'll nail it and say yes.
I really like the idea of what are the characteristics, what do you consider the characteristics of a great neighborhood to live in? And then where in Jericho do you see those? As sort of aligned with, along with what Wendy said, because what's what's your favorite neighborhood residential area? Well, I sure like the one I live in.
Right.
And that's going to be for most people, the answer. But the characteristics, what is it about your neighborhood that you like? That works great if you live in a neighborhood.
Right.
If you're one of the many Jericho residents who doesn't live in a neighborhood.
Right, so maybe that's why I think it should be slash residential area or residence.
I guess, yeah, I guess I feel like the first question is assumes that a neighborhood is your favorite kind of thing. It 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 sort of assumes that the neighborhood is the norm. And I I guess I'm not it sort of biases, I think it's a a leading question in a way.
Yeah, that's what Wendy thought.
I think the third, the third question, the multiple choice one, is more interesting to me than the first one.
But I can see so many people just clicking all of the above, because Jericho needs all of the above. In the in the opinion of most people in town.
I would, I I actually
Pick the top three then. They could pick, pick three. Yeah.
We could take all of the above away as an option and just say, select all that apply. And that way, if they do select them all, then they select them all. But if they don't, they should.
I I prefer Heidi's idea, pick your top three. You think we need the most of?
I I love that you're giving me that. I think it was Chris, but but I'll take whatever.
Take the credit. This is a big guy who can handle it.
Sarah, you're still with us. We haven't heard from you in a while. We miss having you here, hoping everything's good at your house. Do you have any comments on the questions?
Gives us a better sense of priority.
I don't, I don't have any comments on the questions, no.
Okay. If I could note, and I don't know that should be part of the questions, but what is not here is anything about housing affordability. And and given that we persistently hear that that is a barrier, I don't know that it goes into the question, but it just seems to it seems glaringly absent. I don't know what to do about that. It's just a comment. I don't think that necessarily has
Good comment.
We could make suggestions on the what characteristics, which we sound like more mixed income housing.
Somebody could say lower, yeah, lower property taxes, better energy use. You know, what makes it cheaper, closer to my job, smaller house.
Yeah.
Well, it certainly could be under the multiple choice. Affordable or workforce or whatever, I mean.
Right, because this is about type of housing as opposed to, yeah, I don't know. There was just something there that felt like it was missing.
Will you, I got to not say no, I'm so sorry, but will you email me or email Linda after the fact? Okay, thanks. Because we got to go. All right, so then, so we're going to close the topic for now. Think about it. Please share your comments with us, absolutely. The next, now we're going to item number ten, which is past events. So does anybody have any liaison updates or takeaways from recent meetings to share with the group? Okay. I, any up, number eleven, any upcoming events that people, that people need to know about? Linda?
I just want to mention, we'll talk about this when we talk about the next meeting, but it's, it is an event at our next Planning Commission meeting, which is a local concerns community discussion about the scoping study that the town's doing to look at the feasibility of connecting Jericho Corners with Riverside via a bike and pedestrian multimodal path.
What's the date of that?
February twenty-first. It's our next Planning Commission meeting. And so I would encourage all of you to spread the word about that and encourage as many people as possible to attend and to, you know, it's sort of a continuation of the conversation that we've had here tonight and knowing that the bike pad connection was a priority that came out in our question of the month. It would be great to have people show up at that meeting so that we can have the conversation about how to get that connection. So I wanted to call that.
Perfect. Thank you.
We have proposed routing for that connection that we can share with the people coming in, whether it's along the side of fifteen or alongside the river or wherever.
So the two options that are currently being considered, one would be, yes, right along Route fifteen. And the other would potentially be on the old railroad bed, more or less, or, you know, we, that could be part of the conversation, like, doesn't make sense to cite it there. So basically, an on-road option and sort of like an off-road option.
Before we present the off-road option, do we have rights or permission to run a bike path through that prided land? Or is it?
No, we do not.
We do not.
We do not.
But the town hired a consultant. The consultant is running the meeting.
Yes.
That would be one of the things that they're going to explain is what would happen. And the town would potentially, if they decided to do that option, have to negotiate for rights of way. And it might not happen because that might not be granted. So that's definitely an obstacle. But we just need to we're host, we're, we're, we're allowing them to use half our meeting for this meeting, for their meeting. Yep. Okay, anything else on other business? Oh, no, upcoming events? Okay, other business?
One question, not to be answered, but I thought that there was a, we needed to talk about roles and committees and how we're assigned.
We are. It's in a, we have it, it's going to be at the I think March fourteenth meeting.
March, no, that's the Affordable Housing Joint Meeting. It's the March twenty-first.
Yeah, March twenty-first, yeah.
Thank you.
You get to elect a new chair. Okay, so then, so number thirteen, wrap up and planning for the next two meetings. So February twenty-first, Linda just said that this local concerns for this connection, pedestrian bike connection. And then the other half of our meeting, we're still working on the agenda. We'll finish the question of the month that we had from today. David won't be joining us. You're welcome to come, but you won't be running anything during that meeting, so we'll be able to do some other work. And then March fourteenth, David will be back. The topic will be housing. The Affordable Housing Committee will be here. It's going to be great. We'll make a shorter agenda so we don't rush as much. Okay, executive session. No executive session? Do we need an executive session? No. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will put forward a motion to adjourn.
Heidi puts a motion to adjourn, second. Eric, seconds. All of us in favor of adjourn? Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Awesome meeting.
Good drive home. Be safe.